Perfect, you're right on. Welcome, everybody. Happy holidays. We'll call a meeting. Number seventeen, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the City Council of the City of Cannon Falls. We have roll call, please.
Ringgold.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
And Mir Altough.
Here. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, second?
Motion by Morris and a second by Bill to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, that brings us to presentations. Tonight, we have David Anderson, Goodhue County, Little Well Coordinator, who's gonna give us a little talk on tobacco.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share a little information about a project that we're working on that is a major concern for everybody in the state of Minnesota and the United States. I'm gonna pass these out, let you take a look at them. These are a variety of e-cigarettes. Share them. I know how many I have, so I will be, you know, counting them at the end of my presentation. Tobacco use is still Minnesota's leading cause of preventable death and disease. A lot of great work has happened over the last twenty years. The percentage of adults and teenagers who use tobacco products has declined big time, but yet, we still have over six thousand Minnesotans who die from smoking and the medical cost is at three point two billion annually. Like I said, the tobacco rate for our teenagers was at an all-time low. And then, over the last couple of years, we've seen this major increase due to the devices that I shared with you here this evening. Mainly, that Juul, that one that looks like a flash drive. That is the product that has just boomed. The majority of our teenagers are using that. I have seen videos of teenagers using it in classrooms because it is so small and can be hidden. Over the last three years, the latest data from the Minnesota Student Survey is on the top graph you can see over there. The green is the increase in the number of eighth, ninth, and tenth grade males and females who are reporting using an e-cigarette in the last thirty days. So with eighth graders, the percent has almost doubled. With the ninth graders, you're seeing a pretty large increase. And then with the eleventh graders, you're seeing a large increase with the females using e-cigarettes. And most of the students who have reported using e-cigarettes have reported, you know, getting them from friends. So, the eighth and ninth graders know an eighteen-year-old who is legal and can buy an e-cigarette, and so they're buying them from those friends. One of the major concerns that we have is the level of nicotine. And in those Jewels, that little pod, Derek, that you're holding, there's the same amount of nicotine in that little pod as there is in a pack of cigarettes. And what we're finding is because they're battery-operated, that our kids are taking a hit off that, and then ten, fifteen minutes later, they're taking another hit. They're going through three or four pods a day. So, that's similar to smoking three or four packs of cigarettes, the amount of nicotine that they're putting into their body. Also, the nicotine that is in those pods is nicotine salt, which is more concentrated and is in a heavier dosage of nicotine. So, the concerns that we have are that the brains of our teenagers are still developing and nicotine is gonna affect them. It's gonna change the brain chemistry. They're more apt to become addicted to other chemicals, and it's gonna affect their learning, their memory, and their attention span. The other concern that we have is with the lung injuries that have been reported in the media. Nationally, over two thousand cases of e-cigarette or vaping products have been associated with lung injuries. There's been fifty-two deaths. In the state of Minnesota, we have a hundred and thirty-five confirmed or probable causes or cases with three deaths. We have one reported case in Goodhue County. So, what do we need to do? We need to continue to educate our parents, our grandparents, our community members, so they're aware of this issue. And so, that's what I'll be working on early next year. We need to partner with our schools and provide them with support because they're ground zero for this challenge with our teenagers. We need to support and help our teens. Nicotine is the most addictive drug that there is, and the tobacco companies, the vaping companies have targeted our teenagers with their marketing, just like the tobacco companies did with cigarettes twenty, thirty, forty years ago. So, we need to support them. We can't just tell them, no, you gotta stop doing this. We can't penalize them for that. So, we have to figure out how we can provide them with that cessation support. We need to get some peer counseling, those kind of things. Then, we need to look at our policies. What can we do to update them? At the county level, we're looking at updating our policy for tobacco retailers. I've made presentations at all our other communities on this topic. So, Goodhue, Zambroda are the two communities that have updated their policies. Most recently, Red Wing, a few years before that. So, again, everybody is gonna be taking a look at those. The list on the screen there, what we could look at. How many tobacco licenses do we want in Cannon Falls? The distance from where places the kids gather. What are the fees? Are they enough to make sure that we're covering the costs for compliance checks, those types of items? Training to make sure that our local businesses have what they need to train their retailers, their clerks. We could take a look at flavor policies. That's one of the issues is with the e-cigarettes and the pods. The kids, you know, it's very smooth and easy for them to start with that. So, by restricting the flavors, selling of flavors, we're eliminating one of those issues right there. And then, we could take a look at raising the age to purchase tobacco products to age twenty-one. Why would we wanna do that? Because research has shown that ninety-five percent of addicted adult smokers have started before they were age twenty-one. And also, a recent study has shown that if we raise the age to twenty-one in Minnesota, thirty thousand young people would not become smokers over the next fifteen years. This is a almost-current map of the number of cities and counties that have already raised the age to twenty-one. I say almost-current because last night, I was down in Rushford, Minnesota, and they just passed a new policy that raises the age to twenty-one and also restricts the sale of the fruity flavor products in their community. So, we'll be updating this map. And then, I'll leave you with a quote from nineteen eighty-one from Phyllis Morris that said, "Today's teenager is tomorrow's potential regular customer, and the overwhelming majority of smokers begin while they're still in their teens." The smoking patterns of teenagers are particularly important to Philip Morris. So, that is almost forty years old, and they're still using that strategy by targeting our teenagers. So, I'm open to questions, if there are any. If not, again, I thank you for your time.
I see tonight on the news that as part of the budget plan in Washington now, they're trying to get that twenty-one age nationwide as part of that deal they're doing in Washington.
Yeah, I saw that also today, and I also know that there's a lot of conversations going up or going on at the Capitol. This is an issue, and there's potential that it could be a state policy. In that case, you know, that would cover the entire state. We would still need to update all our local policies here because a lot of them, it's time to update them. We need to do that. We don't have to wait for the federal or the state government. We could make that decision here locally. I had a dream here the last month and a half ago with the idea that wouldn't it be great if we get all our communities in Goodhue County and the county to raise that age to twenty-one at the same time? That way, teenagers that live in other communities couldn't drive to those other communities and still purchase products. So, that's still a dream, a goal of mine. I don't know if it's gonna be reality or not, but it's something to work for.
Are the fruity ones or something, I thought they're pulling these off the market, but is that just certain areas, or what is that?
Juul, the company that makes those flash-drive ones, have pulled a lot of their fruity flavors off the market. Walmart, I believe, said, you know, we're not gonna continue to sell these. We'll sell what we have, and then we're not gonna continue selling them. So, there are some actions to that. Ideally, with the e-cigarettes, to pull the mint and the menthol flavor ones at the same time would be good. Juul hasn't done that. And they've also said, you know, this is our new policy that we're not gonna continue to sell these. If a retailer does that, they're going against our wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Maybe something we wanna look at.
Yeah.
A lot of the tones are on our new one.
I didn't take any.
They're all still there.
They are all.
Put that on our goals.
I knew I didn't have to worry about you.
Razzie raspberry or whatever that flavor is. Gross. Can't imagine.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed or discussed in a resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B, minute meetings for the November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen City Council Work Session Two. Item C, minute meetings for the December third, two thousand nineteen City Council Meeting. Item D, Resolution twenty-four fifty-two, approving the amended conditional use permit for Casey's General Store. And item E, Resolution twenty-four fifty-three, approving a state water service connection fee. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'd like to pull down item D.
Okay, we can make, put that on our council business as seven C, Resolution twenty-four fifty-two. Anything else? I'm gonna pull down A, just and correct claims. We'll make that item D under council business. Anyone else? Take a motion to approve items C, B, C, and E.
So moved. Second?
Motion by Derek, a second by Bill to approve items B, C, and E. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. That brings us to council business. First item, item A, approve the appointment of utility billing clerk position. Wes?
So, we conducted interviews last week, I believe, last Wednesday. We interviewed six candidates, myself, Mayor Altough, and three other city employees that are gonna be working closely with this person. And one candidate really stood out to all of us. We had her appointed the highest out of everybody. She is really willing to come work for the city, so we're recommending the hire of Ellen Hartman.
I see Ellen's in the audience, so do I have a motion to approve Ellen as our utility billing clerk?
So moved.
Go ahead, I'll say it.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mary Jill and a second by Morris to approve that position. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? You're appointed. Congratulations, Ellen. Welcome.
Why, Ellen? That's all I ask. We'll talk later.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, Resolution twenty-four fifty-four, approving a change in rates charged for ambulance services. Tim?
I think the last time we addressed this was about two thousand sixteen. And initially, when we started the budget workshops and we met in the small groups, we started talking about different ways and the ambulance working more as a business. And even though we are a service entity to the community, we talked about some growing pains and changes that we were experiencing as a service. And one of the big ones, you obviously see we're adjusting all the rates essentially, but one of the big ones we wanted to talk to the council about essentially is the lift assist. Last year, yeah, last year, we had about ninety-eight lift assists, and only a third of those people got transported. So, we would go out, get the person up off the ground, make sure they were okay. Once we do that, there's a bunch of paperwork we do have to generate, and then, we'd go back in service. And we have people that utilize that quite a bit because their family and their loved ones don't wanna have them transition into a different type of care setting or whatever the case may be. And they're using us essentially to be that extra set of hands and everything else. And it's getting, it can be a little burdensome, and essentially, every time we do that, we lose money. Now, if that's a service you guys want to offer, I understand, but there is a cost to it. And it's hard to figure out what the true cost is. You can look at personnel time. If you look at, you know, what it costs to have the ambulance, how to staff the ambulance, all the equipment in it, and you go through the depreciation fee schedules, that's roughly about six hundred and fifty dollars a call. And so, if we wanna cover our personnel costs, the cost for us to generate the paperwork and all that stuff, we may or may not make a small profit at two hundred dollars, but we don't want it to be so severe that loved ones are so hesitant to call the ambulance. And I spoke with the fire chief and the police chief, and if we do decide to go forward with charging for a lift assist, my recommendation to the council is that it's, no matter what department it is. So, then, you know, we don't want the people calling nine-one-one and saying, send the police, send fire, but do not send the ambulance because we don't want any type of bill. We don't want anything else. And then, if law enforcement arrives or the fire department arrives, you know, they want to have that extra set of hands, have that patient evaluated. But the family is so, we just wanna, we wanna kind of avoid that situation. And so, my plan is if that charge is adopted tonight, that obviously, we go pick up a person. We would send them a letter saying, you know, you get three lift assist, or two lift assists per se in a year for free, and the third one, we will charge. And then, we'll send the letters, and so, they're notified of that. But it's just becoming a huge problem, not only in Cannon Falls, but throughout the whole nation.
Are these rates state-mandated, or is there a range that people charge?
There is a range. I did compare Lake City and a few other ones in southeast Minnesota. And I didn't go to the highest. I didn't go to the lowest. I just chose middle of the road.
Which was above what we were charging in the.
Correct. And just because we charge these rates doesn't mean that's what we're gonna collect, you know, between insurance obligations and contracts and agreements. And Medicare, Medicaid really are the ones that drive what they will reimburse. You know, they might say that ambulance calls only worth twelve hundred dollars, I mean, even though we charge two thousand, and then, out of that twelve hundred dollars, they're only gonna pay six hundred, so that leaves six hundred to the patient. So, it's kind of a complex mess.
I like what you came up with, with the lift assist being whether, no matter whether it's police, fire, or ambulance, because I can, you know, everybody thinks of these things when they figure it out, and pretty soon, they'll call three times for the police, three times, you know, they will figure it out. And there's, it has to happen. It just does.
When you say.
I can tell you're overtaxed.
When you say you got ninety-eight calls this year, and then, if we were to change it and send out the letter and say, okay, first two, free, how many would you think that would cut down if, how many repeat customers out of that ninety-eight?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question. I have no doubt to, you know, put that against.
Okay.
I know there is a family member that they were calling quite a bit, and then, we finally had a good heart-to-heart with them, that, you know, we don't want your loved one to break their hip. We don't want them, you know, because obviously, that's even worse for them. And we really, you really need to do something, and we're willing to help you or get you appointed, at least in the direction. And finally, I think with us sitting there, talking with their family and the loved one being present, that, you know, they made that decision to start looking for assisted living.
That's good.
Can you tell me about the new one you added, the motor vehicle crash, patient assessment and refusal?
Yes, and so, we go to a lot of motor vehicle collisions now, accidents, and I do not, I did not pull those numbers to tell you how many that is, but everybody wants to be assessed. And, which is fine. Once again, it's the same as lift assist. But most insurance companies have a clause per accident, they will pay so much. And it's roughly, depending on the insurance company, it looks like about four hundred dollars if you're not transported for services related to that. So, it's just, I figured if we're gonna do the same type of thing with lift assists, it's about the same type of assessment, same amount of paperwork. It should be about the same fee.
Okay, so it's only if someone's assessed, not.
Right, if we get there and you're like, I don't want no ambulance, and I don't wanna be assessed or anything else, then, okay, that's fine. But we go through the whole process. Because usually, what happens, especially if there's another party involved, then we usually get requests for records from attorneys, and they're always looking for the next, you know, who's at fault and who can we sue, so.
Right. And when you say waiting time at a hundred dollars for thirty minutes and EMS personnel standby per person, are those together? Or do you pay for the waiting time of the ambulance plus all of the EMS?
Good question. So, there is sometimes, this would be, the waiting time's new for us. So, currently, sometimes, we are asked to go to Red Wing, take a patient from our hospital to Red Wing, and then, wait. Well, we don't get paid any money just to sit there. We, I mean, we like our job. I'm not trying to be more, you know, but essentially, as a business, we don't get paid any money to wait. So, if we're not moving a patient to a hospital, essentially, we're not getting paid. And so, sometimes, they'll want us to sit there, and so, we'll sit there for thirty, forty minutes, hour and a half, and then, we're just sitting there, not doing anything. So, that's a pretty common fee. We've never done it before. I just feel like if we're gonna tie that resource up, that we should probably be collecting something for that. And then, the EMS personnel standby, a lot of times, we're getting to the point that they don't want an ambulance sitting somewhere, so they're having an event for profit, and they just want an EMT to be on-site.
So, they're different things.
So, they're different things. And so, we never had a fee, so we really couldn't charge. So, I just wanted to be able to have something back so I could do that when somebody calls.
Oh, that's reasonable.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four fifty-four?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mary Jill and a second by Derek to approve Resolution twenty-four fifty-four, approving a change in rates charged for ambulance services. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Item seven C is Resolution twenty-four fifty-two, approving amended conditional use permit for Casey's General Store. Bill, you pulled that one down.
Yeah, first, I'd like, I understand, we have a representative from Casey's. If you would come forward and explain this, and then, we have a gentleman in the audience too that I believe lives right near you, and I would like to talk and maybe have a question or two for you.
My name is Jordan Lilamone. I work for Design Tree Engineering. We're consultants for Casey's. So, this is the site plan for the new parking lot at Casey's. So, basically, there used to be a building right here, about right here. They're gonna demo that building, bring in Phil, remove the existing retaining wall that was right here, and extend the retaining wall to the east and a little bit to the north. So, there'll be about a ten-foot retaining wall right here.
And that's all you're doing on that new parcel is parking?
Yep, and then extending the canopy here, so adding three new gas stalls.
Three new pumps, yeah.
New pumps, okay.
Six new pumps, three.
Yeah.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, right. Awful lot of fill there, though.
Yeah.
Because that's quite a drop.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and that was approved at the planning commission a week ago, a week ago yesterday, yeah. Okay. I know we have a gentleman here, Mr. Hoffman, who might have a question or two for you.
Jim Hoffman, nine seventeen Park Street West. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I also want to apologize. I did miss a public hearing, but if you don't pay constant attention to the beacon, which I do not, you miss those things. So, that's what I'm doing here tonight. Part of that helps a lot. I did not realize of the plan, but one of the things I wanna bring up is how big is Too Big up there? Because the traffic is a lot more than it ever was before. I've lived down in that area for thirty-five years, and I've seen a lot of increased traffic. Now, I don't doubt that the fact of the location has been perfect. People would stop there two years after the west one was closed and try and get gas. So, I understand of what a great location it is. But the other things are, you know, with the garlic bread smell, the pizza and everything is really nice for the first couple of days, but after, day after day, that gets a little bit old. We put up with the turkey farm smells in the summertime, and I understand that they were there first. But we were there first now, too. The light pollution, I would like to address. The other things quickly is, I can tell, granted, I'm a little bit, I know a lot about those things, but also, the strong orders of gasoline when they unload, I can tell every time they're up there unloading, and the diesel, the trucks and different things, when they're idling up there, it's because everything's lower, everything kind of settles right down in our area down there. I just wanna know, you know, this helps a little bit, but it's gonna be that much closer to the street. What about light pollution and those kind of things down there? And I'm just concerned about, you know, what that's gonna do to our property values down there. I understand that at the public hearing, there's only a couple of people over there, but I think a lot of these things, and I understand the process, I think a lot of these things get missed. And I think we probably would add more people there if they even knew what was going on. They won't know until they start construction. So, I don't fault anybody for that. That's the process. But I just wanted those things. The other thing I wanted to bring up mostly is six more pumps, canopy, whatever. I understand this more than probably some of you guys do. What's the storage capacity gonna increase to up there? It's gotta be at least eighteen thousand gallons. And what's that gonna look like?
Yeah, I just know they're putting a new tank right here. That's all.
And that's.
I'm not sure on the size.
And that much gas. And that much gasoline stored, excuse me, that much gasoline stored in a residential area really concerns me, so I think that's something that perhaps was missed in some of this, but I would love to have that looked into, probably could just put the tank right behind the building up there and then fill in around that, but that's a significant increase of the amount of gasoline stored on that spot and basically, not basically, it's a residential area, so thank you again, I appreciate the time.
Say, Joe?
Thanks.
Did you get any notification by mail?
No, not to my, not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge, we may have, but I saw it in the Beacon and I just remembered that, I assumed that things were done on Tuesdays and by the time I called Matt and he said, no, no, we did that yesterday, so anyway. Thanks again. And maybe if I could have a chance to look at the plot plan and see what it is up there. Overall, I'm not, I'm not against Casey's, believe me, so, all right, thank you.
Dave, is it a normal process to notify neighbors of-
We, we did mail, about how far away from Casey's are you?
One block.
You might, yeah. Are you to the sou-
I'm in the middle of the block.
To the south?
To the east.
Yeah, the south.
Are we 900 block?
917.
Okay. We'd have been normally within a block of the perimeter of, of Casey's, would have received mail notice and then the published notice in the Beacon, so I could double check, I'm not sure if you were on that list or not, but, right?
My biggest concern is gasoline storage, what's it going to take to supply those pumps?
Did Casey's consider having the additional gas storage right behind the building versus where you're putting it?
I don't think there's any room behind the building, myself.
I mean, I know there's a steep drop-off there.
Yeah, and I know those tanks are pretty deep, so they need to be like 30 feet away from structures usually.
Okay.
I know nobody at the Planning Commission mentioned gas, it was more or less clean-up green space and that type of thing.
Lighting and-
Lighting, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And yeah, garbage smell. Is there any way, I see where the garbage is kind of on the southeast corner there, was there ever any consideration to have the garbage be just to the west side of the building, because that space, that little rectangle there, it seems to be, it's not parking, it's just kind of dead space?
Yeah, I think they looked into that and they didn't want it over there because then they'd have to trap over this, they have fuel tanks.
Oh, okay.
Heavier, but I think that's why they decided to put it in there.
Air pump is and stuff?
Yeah, yep, right on that side of the building, okay.
All right, well, thank you for the information.
Okay, does anybody have a motion to approve Resolution 2452?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Been a motion by Steve and a second by Morris to approve Resolution 2452 approving amended conditional use permit for Casey's General Store. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just mention to Jim that there's a number of conditions in this permit, this resolution that was just approved and they match up in part with the ordinance that's specifically written for this kind of land use, so there's certain additional details that Jordan and Casey's are going to have to respond to under this resolution that was recommended to the city council. So you're welcome to stay in contact, we'll be getting revised plans and more detail from, from the Casey's folks. And again, just remember that where Casey sits today as well as where the former accounting office was or is now, that property is zone B2 business commercial, it's residential around it, but that site's been zone B2 commercial, which allows this type of use by conditional use.
And like I said, my biggest concern is the extreme amount of increase of-
Okay. 7D Just Claims, I brought that down, I just got a few questions here. We just went through some tough budget talks and I just was kind of looking at the expenditures here and I got a question for you, Joe. There seems to be a big bill on tires, is it like $4,000 for tires? Is that just general maintenance or is that, is that what you do every fall this time of year?
So, yeah, every year, as the chief stated in some of the bus budget sessions, that we will, we push forward some 2020 purchases for if we have excess in our current budget and, including most of the officers, all their uniforms, their uniform allowance comes up, so we get that, they spend that and we look at what we need moving forward, so tires was one of those things.
Well, as tough as these budget talks were, and we had to squeeze about 37,000, I just, if this isn't general maintenance, I'm just a little, a little upset that we're all of a sudden we're spending all this money just to use up your budget.
Now, was, Joe, was this used to replace tires on all our, our police?
So it'll, it'll be tires for next year. So one, we, we had two good sets of winter tires from last winter. So we have a set, so what we purchased was a set of summer tires and a set of winter tires for each squad. That's three, three of the mark squads.
Right, now we, you know, we rotate how we buy police vehicles every so often, so I would think tires will only need to be replaced on maybe a couple vehicles a year instead of-
So the next vehicle that would be a replacement would be the Crown Victoria, which takes a different tire size, so.
Well, it was like, well, over $4,000 for tires and it just struck me that, was it just general or, you know, just using up the money, I guess I-
Last time I bought tires, they were pretty expensive, so 4,000 doesn't seem that bad to me, but-
And these are state contract prices, so we get them way cheaper than what you and I can get them for, so.
Well, like I said, I was just, because our vehicles are all different ages, I just, it just, it did seem a little funny that it was all at once.
Yeah, we, the ones we bought for, we plan on having for at least the next two years.
Okay.
So we just hold on to the tires until we need to replace them for future vehi- Okay, so they're not-
It's, it's a lot easier for Lindalls, because they get, there's, he actually told us he loses money off doing our tires because of all the paperwork and we've, you know, one of the other things is, okay, well, let's just do it at once, we always have the tires, we blow a tire, we have one ready, we don't have to wait a day or two to get tires, so. So it's just stocking up like all of other supplies.
That makes sense.
Well, I see there's a lot of, you know, you, you, uniform allowances in here and what's, what's a crisis response class, is that, what's, is that just something the state puts on or?
Yep, so the requirements of the post licenses require us to have 12 hours of crisis, diversity, and one other area of training within those three years, so that was one of the classes that would fulfill that for an officer and they'll be good for the next license cycle.
What's the League of Minnesota City's patrol subscription?
That's a one-year subscription to an online training courses that the officers use, such as their OSHA stuff that we need to do yearly and monthly update classes that officers partake in.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to approve a just and correct claims.
Actually, you can't.
I can't, somebody else will.
Can't do that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Bill and a second by Mary Jill to approve the just and correct claims. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, brings us to reports. Wes?
I have nothing.
Tim?
The only thing I'd like to mention is if people are feeling stressed out of the holidays and are having a hard time, there's plenty of support groups around and if they need to seek those, those resources, go ahead and do that, there's no shame in asking for help if you need it, so not, the holidays are not bright and cheerful for everybody, if you're having those tough times, seek the help you need.
Thank you. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things the EMS chief just mentioned, we posted that on Facebook recently, so people have multiple different resources, they're also working on, instead of 911-988 for somebody that's in crisis, so absolutely, we're, people can call 911 too, we're there to try to help out. I'd like to thank Community Resource Bank tonight, they're serving our first responders a meal right now at the Public Safety Building, so hats off to them for showing their gratitude for us, it's greatly appreciated, so that's all I have.
Dave, nothing? Kyle, got a shame or update?
Good evening, council members and the community. Just a couple of updates for you. In January, and I'm not sure of the exact date yet, but the chamber will be taking credit cards for payments. Up to this point, we have not and we're in the process right now of getting everything rolling, and so I'll be watching for that. Our I Love Cannon Falls mugs, the 72 of them that we ordered have blown out, our next order should be here by the end of this week, so if you're still looking for the I Love Cannon Falls mugs, they are $10 apiece, they should be here by the end of the week. That's what we're hoping for. Then, I do have the 2020 calendar of events I've shared with the council members and the staff members. I will put a news release of this, hopefully in the Beacon, but over the Christmas period, I will definitely get the 2020 calendar up on the chamber website, and so that way that'll be all updated. A couple of new ones, our golf tournament is June 25th, that's a Thursday, and we are having it at the Summit Golf Club. It's becoming a partnership of a golf tournament, because there's Summit, we're going to have to have it catered, we're going to have to have somebody bring in the tents, tables and chairs, another person needs to come in with the beverages, liquor license, and so it's actually a community event being put on, and so, and Summit Golf Club is just excited to have us out there, so that'll be very nice. Chamber FunFest's, of course, are on the second Thursdays of June, July, August, and September. We are not having one in May. The last couple of years, the weather just isn't good for FunFest's, so we start in June and that would be June 9th. That's the biggies. Of course, the Easter hunt, April 11th, that is the Saturday before Easter, we will do it again in the city parking lot behind Remax or across from Family Fair. That worked out so well last year and we just had a ton of children that were just well-contained and moved along. Any questions? That's wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Commission, Derek or Steve, I guess we talked about what-
Yeah, the only thing we had was the Casey's thing that we just passed, so we didn't really have anything else.
Okay. EDA, Dave?
One comment to make back to Planning Commission to us, thank you Matt again for filling out the quorum that night, for coming in specially, we needed him there, so thank you. EDA, a couple of things, and there'll be more details coming forth in the, in the next few weeks, is the Economic Development Authority has administered their Economic Development Fund policy probably since 2010 or so, and the Economic Development Authority uses that money to facilitate economic development in the community. We've made traditional loans to foster economic development, we've purchased land for economic development, we helped redevelop the formerly Chevrolet property with, with those funds, so along with that funding source, the EDA adopted last week something that they're doing in conjunction with our Blanden grant, which is to provide loans and grant assistance to local Cannon Falls businesses for digital marketing. And the difference on this particular financing is not that it's coming from the Economic Development Fund of the EDA, it's that it's matching up with the grant dollars from our $75,000 Blanden grant and it's also requiring a, about a 25% share contribution by the businesses who are doing this project, so we're, we're excited to move forward with the details and get the word out to local businesses that this funding source is available and to those who want to use social media, those who want to develop a website, those who want to use digital marketing opportunities, they'll be able to use dollars from the EDA, from Blanden and their own pocketbook to do this, so it's, it's quite, quite, quite a nice package, I think we'll have some, some pretty good response on that. The EDA moved forward, working with Economic Initiatives on an agreement that solidifies the relationship between Economic Initiatives and the Economic Development Authority for the redevelopment of the Cannonball site, we've talked about that before, but we've now reduced to writing an agreement that both the EDA and Economic Initiatives will sign, we're both, as I told you before, we're both contributing up to $150,000 each to this effort, so we felt it was probably time to have at least something in writing between the two groups, so we've got that with the help of Attorney Burkhart. And then the final thing we talked about at the meeting last week was the Economic Development Program for next year, primarily a staffing issue, and we looked at and discussed all the alternatives and the consensus of the EDA was to continue to pursue contractual relationships with SITA, our consultant that we've used this year on a number of projects, but also use them probably more extensively next year, 2020, for providing economic development services. And to that end, I'll be meeting with Ron Ziegler and a member of his staff this Thursday to, to have further conversations on that, so those are probably the three main items at the meeting, unless there's something else, Morrison, John, that-
I think that was it.
As we said, yeah.
Okay. Public Works met tonight, Wes, you want to, anything there you'd like to bring up?
We're still working on that District 6 snow removal agreement.
Oh, sure.
We had a good conversation about that, I guess. Downtown streetlights, we talked about that and what, what a plan we have for that, we're running out of ballast quick for the lights, so we're working, hopefully we can get through 2020. What else was there?
Are the ballast obsolete, is that why?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have three left.
We talked about the snow removal on the sidewalks.
Yep. And downtown snow removal, so that was about it.
I, I would like to add something and Adam, I want to apologize to you, I know after our last meeting you asked me when we were going to have a Public Works Commission meeting and we scrambled to get one set up for today, I did not have your phone number, I would have called you to let you know, so just wanted to-
Burkhart.
Okay.
Okay, anything, Steve, you got anything tonight?
Welcome aboard, Ellen. Call me later, I'll tell you which characters to watch out for.
Matt?
That's all I got.
I just want to say thank you to our police department, fire department and emergency medical services, last night the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts got to do a tour, Lieutenant Berg gave a little talk, he got to give the kids a tour, they got to sit in the fire hall and look at all the trucks and I know that the boys were, were thrilled, a lot of them were pretty shy to start off, but once you got through the door, they were fighting to get in there, so thank you for that last night.
Bill? Well, first, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, congratulations, Ellen. One other subject area I've been thinking about for many months, but I didn't want to bring it up during our budget discussions, for those of you who do not know, just about all of our police officers from top to bottom have been doing some, I guess you would refer to it as moonlighting, as private security at the winery. I have a problem with this for a number of reasons, one, what is done is that the winery pays us the money for their, their salary and we get a small stipend, I think David's about 20 bucks per event. This could lead to some very big problems for the city, some true conflict of interest, what happens if there's a problem there and, and because Joe is here, I'll just use him an example, if he- use him as an example, if he was running security there and one of our officers is called there, who's in charge? He's doing it on private time. Uh, I think we could have a real liability issue with this if something ever does go wrong. Uh, so I would like staff to, uh, look at putting something out there where we eliminate our officers from doing any s, private security jobs in the city. Feel free to go do them in other cities, because then we're not, uh, have no liability, but, uh, so I'd like, uh, Dave, if you can maybe put something together for sometime in January, so, uh, I know we've been unable to find anything in our files showing that the council ever approved this kind of stuff. I know our city attorney is not, uh, real happy with us doing this type of activity, so let's, let's try and adjust, address it.
Awesome. It's been going on since Maloney's opened the winery, or? We don't know.
That's the problem. I don't know, Joe, if you, if you know how long we've been doing this.
I think this was our third year.
Okay.
Uh, we used to do it for Goodyear County at the, uh, malt house, too.
Okay.
So how is this different from, don't school dances usually hire an officer to come in, too? They don't do that anymore?
No, they just ask, just let us know that there's an event, and we're free to.
That's after you graduated, they didn't need it.
Well, I, I haven't even noticed. Do you, do you have your city uniform on when you're down?
No, they request us be in plainclothes.
Plainclothes?
But it's, but it's no different. I mean, they, they pay the full.
Right.
Uh, our full hourly wage. Actually, the, the lesser officers get more of their wage. For me, it would be less than time and a half. It's a flat rate plus a $20 service charge, I think, for every event.
Per, per.
Which, which covers the paperwork on our end, uh, bill them, and things like that.
But it runs through our payroll system, and it can look like the city is, it, it just doesn't look right to me.
Who pays the withholding?
Yeah.
On that? And the work comp and all that stuff? Because, you know, the little I know about workers' comp insurance is that usually the accident doesn't happen on the job, it happens in a car accident on the way to work or the way home. And so I'm just wondering how that translates. So say if you're leaving your job here at the city and then going to the winery to work, and you get in a car accident on the way, where, where do we have a?
So my knowledge is there's an on-duty time and off-duty time, and that's where work comp is.
But work comp, no, work comp is portal to portal. It's leave your home to when you get home again.
And I've heard of those claims be denied by work comp because they're not on duty.
The worst one we, I, I'm just saying, the worst one we ever had at the bank was someone spraining her ankle in the parking lot, coming to work on a snowy day. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I just think it's a question, you know, maybe it's not, I don't
Again, I just think it's a real can of worms for the.
We should certainly look into it and see what we should do. I agree.
Dave, if you would be so kind.
Yeah.
Bring us something.
Okay.
I'm done.
Derek?
Uh, nothing for me.
Mary Jill?
I have nothing.
Well, Christmas is coming, and hope everybody has good holiday, and Ellen, nice to see you come aboard.
Music and movies is back, Ellen.
I just wanted to say, um, welcome, Ellen. I'm glad to have you onboard. I was thinking that maybe we could have a work session, a short work session after our next meeting in January, maybe go over the goals we set for 219 and see how that panned out.
Like we.
And maybe if you got some ideas for 2020, just a brief meeting, we don't really have to have staff or department, it's just the council talk about a little bit. Anybody try that?
Fine with me, I'm sure.
Okay, after the council, first council meeting in January, okay? Okay. That brings us to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. I'll open the public inputs. Jeff?
Hi, I'm Chuck Widholm, Cannon Falls, South Forest Street. I was recently given a certificate for years of service. I wasn't able to attend, so I'd like to express my thanks to everybody that had selection in it, because it's kind of nice to be recognized doing something you enjoy, and I do enjoy it. We've seen a lot of changes in 15 years from top to bottom, and I think we've kind of rolled through it. I'm the second longest public works employee down there. So there's been a lot of change, but I work with some great people, and the council has been very receptive to an old man, so I appreciate it. So, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Well, thanks for your service.
Thank you, Chuck.
Anybody else's public input?
Good evening, um, Madam Peters, Cannon Falls. I just got a question, kind of doing some refinancing, and I'm just kind of wondering why don't we, as a council, refinance our, our, uh, where they just did road construction on the east side, west side? Um, I'm at 6%. Do we not think we could find something better than that? Just a question, I don't know.
We have some.
I, I think the assessment rate has been a standard rate, not so much tied to the cost of money.
Okay.
So I think that's just been the policy on recent assessments, that it's been consistent through the, in this case, the four projects.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's always wondered.
Yeah.
Have a good Christmas.
But we have, uh, refinanced.
Right.
Whole loans, you know, as a city, uh, when we have the chance to get a lower rate.
Yeah. Good question.
Yep. Anybody else's public input?
I, Tim Deemer, Cannon Falls. Just, where do I, never know where to, how to, just going into my, my mind is pretty... Kind of wondering what anybody else would do in regard, I don't know if I have to... An issue about reports that are made that are not factual, not, um, not at all correct, police reports, um, they're in writing, some things may be verbal, but I don't know what, where to go from here. Actions of a police officer that was, I should have brought up, I was here last council meeting, I kind of didn't feel like it was going to get me anywhere by standing up and speaking again and again and again, after months go by, and filled out a police report or a complaint last, uh, Friday, over a week ago. Seven, eight, nine, you know, nine. So, would, would you, um, want to choose to schedule a consideration of an item on a future agenda for my, I, I don't really want to be the downer of, you know, all the happy faces, the joyous time of year, and with public input at the end? I was debating to have a moment of silence, I didn't know if I should do it at the beginning of my three minutes, which I just cleared, I had set this for three minutes, I know when I was done, um, or at the end, I'd, I'd like to take, you know, just sit in silence for many moments, not just a moment, probably 30 seconds, but if I got a minute left, the last minute, I'll just like to use as a moment of silence. For whatever reason, you can meditate, you can pray, you can think of, um, think of people that, you know, a lot of, why we take a moment of silence for the, the brave and the people that have sacrificed, you know, life, and... So I'm just wondering, wanting to get to the, the bottom of this, if, if, if you all think and agree that there can be alternative truths, like some, I don't know, like this alarm keeps, it's a timer, I guess, but is.
Your three minutes is just about up, so.
All right, take a moment of silence, and is there something in the future that we can schedule?
I would say if you got something to bring, talk to, uh, the city administrator, Diane, set it on the agenda or something.
How, how, how long should I wait to get an answer back from a complaint I made? Maybe that's something.
I don't know, you can't do that here, so.
No, I, I'm, is a question, I'm, I'm saying, how, how much time do you think it should take after you made a complaint, no matter?
You had a complaint against the police department?
Yeah, I filed it last Friday.
Okay. Joe, can you answer that, uh, how long it would take to reply normally?
So, the chief handles those things, so if you want to follow up with him, or I will let him know that you've asked questions and have him reach out to you.
Is that going to be a long reach, or months from now? It could be.
That's a, you're gonna have to deal with, yeah.
I don't know.
All right.
Okay, anybody else's public input? Public input. Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public input portion of the council meeting. Uh, before we adjourn, I want to wish everybody happy holidays, and, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second? Second by Morris, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried.